We're calling to order the City Council meeting of February 10th. Please stand to pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Will the clerk please call roll?
Jerry DiTullio.
Here.
Tim Fitzgerald.
Here.
Bud Starker.
Present.
George Pond.
Present.
Zachary Urban.
Present.
Tracy Langworthy.
Here.
Kristy Davis.
Here.
Genevieve Wooden. We have a quorum.
Do we have any changes to the minutes of January 27? We do? Mr. DiTullio?
I move to approve the minutes of January 27, 2014.
I'll second.
Minutes have been approved in second. Are there any changes? I didn't hear that. Please poll the council.
Motion carries eight zero.
And we have any proclamations or ceremonies tonight? I don't know of any. Let's move to citizens' right to speak. Citizens who wish may speak on any matter not on the agenda for a maximum of three minutes and sign the public comment roster. Citizens who wish to speak on agenda items, please sign the general agenda roster or appropriate public hearing roster before the item is called to be heard. And we do have one citizen. If that citizen would please come up to the podium. Vivian Voss. This will be a non-agenda item. And please give your name and address, spelling your last name.
Vivian Voss. V as in Victor, O S as in Sam, that's one S. 6920 West 47th Place. I want to speak with just a few thoughts and comments personally from myself in regards to 38th Avenue and the five to seven million that we're contemplating. I think what I've read, what I've heard, there's been some developers that have spoken to the fact that West Denver and Highlands is possibly crossing Sheridan and coming into Wheat Ridge due to the low cost of the homes as they are right now and some other incentives. So I think we should give that a chance to percolate and maybe happen before we go ahead with spending money. In regards, I also think that Wheat Ridge at 38th and Wheat Ridge Ridge at 38th and Wheat Ridge 2020.
Excuse me. Are you discussing an item that is on our agenda?
No.
No?
I don't believe 38th Avenue, five to seven million is on the agenda tonight.
Okay. Go ahead. I'm sorry.
So let's continue to let Ridge at 38th and Wheat Ridge 2020 do their jobs that they have been doing with promoting Wheat Ridge. And the development at 38th and Wadsworth, it seems to be a thing that is happening. Let us see how that develops and brings business and sales tax and revenue to 38th Avenue. And maybe we could spend the five to seven million on painting buildings, tearing down those that might be needed to be torn down. And how about building a parking garage? And let's add some bushes. Let's not add any trees. Those just hide things. Let's add some bushes. Let's put in some trash cans, benches. Let's do the lights. And maybe we could actually take Wadsworth to Sheridan and make it all one instead of broken up into different segments. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else care to speak? All right. This is an item not on the agenda?
What's that?
This is for time for items that are not on the agenda.
Oh, okay.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Let's move to the approval of the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda? Then let's go ahead and move forward. Let's start out with the reading of the consent agenda. Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Fitzgerald. Okay. First. Resolution 10 dash 2014. There are 57 open purchase orders from 2013, from the 2013 budget that need to be carried over in 2014. Each purchase order is associated with a specific project that was not fully completed in 2013. The funds were encumbered for the purchase orders were transferred to the unreserved fund balance of the relevant fund when the purchase orders were closed. To continue these projects in 2014, a supplemental budget appropriation in the amount of $4,512,901 is necessary to allow transfer of those funds into specific budget line items for the 2014 budget. Is a motion in order?
On the consent agenda, please just go ahead and read them all by the titles there, then we'll do it all in one vote.
All righty.
Thank you.
Resolution 12 to 14. This is a resolution concerning an intergovernment agency agreement. The IGA was approved by City Council in October 14. Let me not read that whole thing. Regarding Pride Mark, was approved by the City Council and went into effect on January 1st, 2012. The purpose of the IGA was to ensure the availability of high-quality emergency ambulance services within the entire corporate limits of the city of Wheat Ridge and the response boundaries of the fire district. And moving on to 14 dash 214. The police department desires to continue participation in a proactive role in the development of a sophisticated crime analysis software system known as Lumen, being developed by the Numerica Corporation. It is now the desire of the Wheat Ridge Police Department, Arvada Police Department, and Numerica to enter into a data-sharing agreement. The Arvada Police Department has approved the attached agreement. And moving on to resolution 13 dash 214. Originally approved in 2009, the emergency operations plan has been updated to reflect current best practices. The primary procedural change has been in increasing cooperation with Exemplar Lutheran Hospital, the coordination of sheltering with Jefferson County, ADA issues, and recommendations regarding energy assistance. And moving on to a final item. On March 10th, 2014, many staff and council members will be attending the National League of Cities Conference in Washington, DC. Therefore, staff recommends counseling the regular council meeting scheduled for that date. There are no items listed on the future agenda for March 10th at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzgerald. Do you want to go ahead and move?
I move that we approve all of the aforementioned items.
Do I have a second?
Madam Mayor, to clarify for the record, item number C is resolution 14 2014, not 214.
Was it read incorrectly? Is that?
Yeah. It's resolution 14 dash 2014.
2014. Okay. We're good.
Second.
Thank you for the second. Is there any other discussion on any of the items? Please poll the council.
Who was the second?
Kristy. Sorry. Kristy.
Kristy.
Please poll the council.
Motion carries eight zero.
Okay. We're going to move on to decisions, resolutions, and motions. Mr. Starker, would you read resolution 11 two dash 2014?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm pleased to introduce item number two on the agenda tonight. This is a resolution number 11 dash 2014, a resolution amending the fiscal year 2014 capital investment program budget to reflect the approval of a supplemental budget appropriation in the amount of $41,870 to fund the 38th Avenue Streetscape Concept Design Contract Extension to Intellige, Denver, Colorado, for not to exceed amount of $41,870. At issuing this, city staff with the collaboration of a design consultant completed the initial phase of the 38th Avenue Streetscape Conceptual Plan and is preparing for the next phase of the study. This is part of the incremental implementation of the 38th Avenue Corridor Plan adopted by City Council in October 2011. The 38th Avenue Streetscape Concept Design will provide needed guidance for future Streetscape improvements and elements within the corridor. Intellige was selected to complete the initial phase and is recommended to perform the next phase on the corridor Streetscape Concept Design work for not to exceed amount of $41,870. A budget appropriation of set amount is required to fund this work effort.
Do we have a motion on this resolution?
I move to approve this motion.
I move to approve this resolution.
Okay. And a second?
Second.
Discussion including, let's see this, we need public comment on this, I assume. Shall we start with public comment? If you're here to comment on this motion, please rise. Everybody line up and we'll take you one by one. And when you speak, of course, give your name and address and spell your last name.
When this program was first announced, I wasn't particularly opposed to it. In fact, I looked at it somewhat favorably. And that was until the law of unforeseen and unpredicted consequences kicked in, namely the traffic impact on residential and adjacent streets. I don't understand the logic of taking traffic off a commercial street and putting it on a residential street. It makes no sense to me, whatever. The effect on my own property is I'm two properties west of Pierce Street. There are times when the traffic is backed up at that light, I can't get out of my driveway. It's unprecedented. I'd also like to comment on, the idea here seems to be to provide a pedestrian area. I don't see a mix of businesses on 38th Avenue that is even conducive to pedestrians. You look at the nearby areas where there is a fair mix, Tennyson Street, 32nd and Lowell, those are not pedestrian areas, even though they have a better mix of businesses. People come on destination. They come, they park, they go, they do their business, they drive away. The other thing that is bothering me is I've not heard any consideration of alternatives. What if you just get rid of the left turn lane and add parking, improve the pedestrian facilities, provide better sidewalks, provide better amenities? Fine. Do that. Also, what about just the null solution? Don't do anything. Concentrate on improving the businesses and then look at doing something else. And also, I haven't seen or heard of any real-world economic analysis of this proposal. Will it return anything for the expenditure? I haven't seen any evidence that it will. What I've heard from day one is if we build it, they will come. Well, I don't think if you build it, they will necessarily come. Is there a real demand there that will justify this expenditure? And lastly, I would like to say that, last thing I heard, the city doesn't have enough money to maintain the streets it has, so why spend another $5 million on this project? Spend it on street maintenance. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And may I have the next speaker? Is the clerk?
Hi. My name's Tom Schmuckey. Most of you might know me. I run Quality Auto Care on the corner of 38th and Pierce.
Did you spell your last?
Last name is Sierra Charlie. H as in Hank, M as in Mike, U as in uniform, K as in kite, E as in elephant.
Okay. And the clerk is recording the time?
First name Tom. It is now.
You're allowed three minutes. I'm just making sure that.
S-C-H-N-U-K-E. K-E.
Good question.
So, can I begin?
Please.
I'm here first and foremost to support Jerry. I've been in contact with him. I like what he put together here. If I had to start with Mazel to hierarchy of need, I'd start with what that gentleman just said and Jerry's paper. The reason I'm here is because of two things. I followed this process for a while, as some of you know. I've talked to some of you individually. We are right there on the corner of 38th and Pierce. We were sold initially when I first came, and I know I'm new to this area. We were sold on two facts. The fact that we were going to bring more car count and more people, which we have less count and I don't know what the people status is. Then we were told, me and a few others, and we all know who they are, but some of them aren't here, so I'm here on behalf of them, we were told that this is what the city wanted. And so we got concerned about that because we wanted some facts. The only facts we have, and I don't like it, I don't agree, I'm a statistics major and I understand all the flaws inside of it, but Jerry was at least honest one time during his mayorship or after that to do a survey. A lot of you have seen it in the paper. And that survey shows that 60% either strongly disagree or disagree what's happened on 38th Avenue. And unlike some of my predecessors here that are not here tonight, I don't disagree with what people trying to do something different on 38th Avenue. I think it's great that we do something on 38th Avenue, but if we're bringing less cars and the people don't like it, then I fail to understand why we wouldn't follow this and bring it to the attention of the people. Because everybody we know, they don't like what's happening on 38th Avenue. If that's the case, they're not going to come on 38th Avenue. So I only have two facts. Joyce, this is what I called you on the phone. I only have two facts to go with. One is the fact I know the car count's down, and I say "I" speaking for us businesses. And two, we know the survey. I agree that you could argue that, oh my gosh, that's a random survey or that's a convenience survey. We can talk about the different surveying methods. Being a statistical major, I'll be glad to have that conversation. But the simple fact is, it's all the facts we got. So I would like to take this vote somehow more to outside of this eight form and to the people, whether or not we need to be able to follow this rule and get a percentage of majority and get a petition. I will help do that on behalf of all the businesses on 38th Avenue. We're not afraid of that. But we don't have any good intelligence that says, we love what's happened on 38th, therefore spend more. So my fear is that we don't spend more. I think we should spend more money. I just don't think we should spend more money by changing lanes. I think we should spend alternative ways, just like the gentleman had before, find better methods to improve people coming to 38th Avenue. I don't think what we're doing today is right. So thanks for letting me be heard.
Thank you. And our next speaker?
Hi. Vivian Voss, 6920 West 47th Place. Let me paint a picture for you. You've got a house in Wheat Ridge that probably has two partners in it. And usually, one partner is going to be more bringing money to the financial aspect of the property than maybe another partner. Or maybe they're equal, or maybe one's fully subsidizing the house. So if one of the partners decides to put in a hot tub, it's $5,000 to $10,000. And so you talk about it, and then you realize the electric is going to be up because of the water that you're heating. And maybe you're going to get a music boombox that goes with the hot tub, you know, all the amenities that go with this. And so financially, you decide, nope, doesn't make sense for our house in this city to have that kind of amenity that isn't necessary. It's just a fun thing to have. Might help with the back, might help with the romance, but it's not a necessary item. Now we have a house of Wheat Ridge, and you've got two partners. You've got the citizens of Wheat Ridge, and you've got the city of Wheat Ridge. And there needs to be a discussion between the two, and that's probably coming to a vote of the people. A vote of the whole city of the people, not just 300 feet on either side of 38th Avenue, which we're talking about redeveloping. And those two partners in the city of Wheat Ridge need to be talking, need to be compromising. No way can anybody go forward and build an imaginary slab of cement to put that hot tub on and a gazebo to cover that hot tub if you're not going to allow the hot tub. And so I oppose the fact that you're trying to spend any more money on pushing 38th Avenue improvement of an amount of five to seven million forward with this resolution 11 2014. And I think it just needs to be a vote of the people before we move any further with spending any more money, especially mine money. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who cares to speak?
Mike Steitz, 11885 West 35th. Few more observations tonight, but one I wanted to bring your attention to. When CDOT was planning the I-70 and Kipling interchange, there was 150 options. They go through the options and say, okay, this won't work. They whittle it down. But always, always, one of their options is to do nothing. I would like to see a plan drawn up for 38th Avenue and take it back to the five lanes and just see what could be done. Nobody ever addressed that. What could be done with the five lanes that we used to have? And I'm sure you can achieve everything that you want to achieve at the Ridge at 38th with five lanes that you can with two. And I can guarantee you too, that any business coming out of Highlands or Tennyson or anywhere, for that matter, are not coming to Wheat Ridge for a two-lane road. They're coming here because of the rent. The rent's cheaper. So don't kid yourself that a two-lane road is going to bring all this business in. We all have parking lots, big parking lots. Don't eliminate those so we don't need the parking on the south side of the street. We need to get rid of the backend parking. You get rid of the backend parking, the parking on the south side of the street, you're going to make it look a lot better because you can take down about 50 signs. And that in itself is going to make 38th Avenue look much, much better. I know the city has hired a PR firm, so consequently, the last eight, nine months, anything that's been written is bought and paid for. You know, I can understand them trying to sell it, but that's a lot of money. Now, if you could do all those things, if you could get rid of the backend parking, if you could get rid of the parking on the south side of the street, you could take that $41,000, give it to the PR people, and have them run ads to get people to drive and shop 38th again. We might pick up a little business that way. When this all started, my father and I were promised by Sarah Showalter and Ken Johnston that nothing would be done in the front of our place if we didn't want it. Now, all of a sudden, they're presenting a plan where they have parallel parking up next, close to the buildings. Now, I'm going to just give you a simple deal here. If you have parallel parking up against the buildings, every place that you have that, guys, exhaust, most exhaust comes out of the right-hand side of cars. So you're going to have big black burnt marks on every single building where that's applied. Simple thing, but I think it's something that you have to look at. Please, don't spend $41,000 extending the plan on 38th. If you're going to spend it, spend it on getting it back the way it was. We need traffic. As a businessperson, we need traffic, and we're not getting it. Traffic's down. It's hurting business. Thank you.
I see we have one more. Janelle, are you timing?
Not on a public hearing. There's no time on a public hearing.
Hi. I'm Gil. I work at Wheat Recycler, 7085 West 38th. Gil McCormick. Been working there for 22 years. So I'm on 38th. One of the reasons our customers were so surprised we were on 38th was because the location was not a destination location for the city. We actually had to look at one point before our expansion whether we wanted to stay on 38th because of the way the city was structured. It just wasn't a location people wanted to come to. So I'm here to say thank you for taking an effort towards making the 38th Avenue Business District better, enhancing and improving it. Well, for our business, will drive traffic for sure. Our traffic is not down. People do find us because we market to them to come to Wheat Ridge. And our average sale is over $1,000 per person. So we have clients coming into Wheat Ridge who have expendable income and will spend money in Wheat Ridge if there are places to do that. So just here to encourage you and thank you for pushing forward with 38th Avenue.
Wanda Sang, 3865 Pierce Street. I'm here tonight to tell you that I just live a few houses off of Pierce to the north, and the traffic on Pierce has increased considerably since the street has been narrowed, 38th has been narrowed. I also want to agree with Mr. Steitz and the others who spoke against this. It sounds to me that the $41,000 you're thinking of spending tonight is only a drop in the bucket of what will be the final cost. I won't drive 38th Avenue anymore. I know a lot of people, my neighbors won't drive it anymore. It's a hazard. It's a hazard to drive up and down that street. I tried it one time and I says, I won't do this again. I think that we had always, when I was on council, we always were conscious of the fact that we needed to spend money on our streets. And there has been some deterioration since this has been going on, driving around Wheat Ridge. I don't meander much out of Wheat Ridge anymore, but I noticed driving around that there's a lot of deterioration going on in our streets. 48th Avenue is really getting worse and worse. getting worse and worse. I think that this will, I think it's a poor use of taxpayers' money. I know whenever we first considered it, or it first passed on council while I was still on, that we were doing, going to do, we were going to spend that first money as an experiment. Well, people, I can tell you that the experiment hasn't worked, in my opinion. I, if I may go back about 60 years and tell you that 38th Avenue was never a commercial area. People did not think of that as our main thoroughfare in Wheat Ridge. It was residential along there. You had a few on, on certain corners that had businesses. But it isn't like Old Town Nevada, who always had a downtown. It isn't like Greeley or Fort Collins, who always had a downtown. And I don't think that you'll ever be able to make it that way. I think that, that it will eventually go to the vote of people in Districts 1 and 2. And I, I just, I just can't believe, are you really thinking about cutting down the trees here in Tree City along that, that street? That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else? Council questions or discussion then? Kristi Davis?
Thank you. So I've been pondering this for a while. And I'm not pondering the vision of, of creating a town center, the activity. I'm excited to see, I drive by, actually, I was at Colorado Plus on Friday. It was packed. You know, I'm excited to see the, the people in the area and that type of thing. I'm excited to hear about what we can do with 38th Avenue. I think my problem, I even thought about asking to postpone this agenda item, but I'm glad I didn't because there was a lot of people to talk about it. But my struggle is, is that, and I'm just briefly reading what Mr. DiTulio had written, is I don't think we've really talked about some of the hardcore issues of what's next. So I, I think, you know, I think it's easy to say, okay, let's come up with a plan. But I, I think that we haven't, to me, the, the plan or the process, it's not the issue against the plan as much as the process to, to decide on the plan. So my, my question or my concern, I have a couple. And one is, you know, we really haven't talked about funding. How is this funding going to take place? What are the options for the funding? Is it realistic that this funding is actually going to occur? I agree that there, you know, there is one option that's been, been put out there, and it's to, you know, shorten, or to, to keep the streets at, at where it is with the road diet and not possible other options. And then I think even the extension of, of the rest of the road, what, you know, we've not talked about that. We're talking about this small little section, but we're not talking about further east and, and what we're going to do with that. I, I kind of have to laugh, and I'll use a home analogy, and people know what I'm talking about. But it's, it's a set thing of when you, you do your kitchen, and you say, okay, I've got the budget to do the kitchen. And then all of a sudden, you do your kitchen, and it's beautiful. And I think my, my dad would really appreciate this. And then all of a sudden, you know, my mom would say, well, yeah, but look at the family room. It looks terrible now. And we've got to work on the family room next. And I think those are discussions that as a council, we're setting on one section, and we're not really talking about the whole section, the two miles of 38th that at one point, they put on a road diet, that we're really not talking about the rest. So, so in summary, and I know I, I don't want to take up too much time, but I, I do have questions because we really haven't had some hard discussions of financing and where we're going to get the money. I, I do think there's also some discussions around the rest of the street and, and what are we going to be doing with the rest of the street? Because we can't just do one section, in my opinion, and let the rest go. And I would think many of the businesses and other things would not appreciate that we just spend money on one section and then let the rest kind of look as it does now. I will say, I do drive 38th every day. I do. You'll see me every day. And I don't have a problem with the traffic. I don't see some of the issues that have been brought forward. I do see it more over by the King Supers and that type of thing, which is one of my proposals of what I would change. But, but I do, I do feel that I like to have, I, I want to have a plan. I understand the growth. I understand, you know, the ideas to do this. But I don't think we've talked about some harder issues of money and how's that going to happen. So I'm not, I just feel that it's difficult right now to, to fund a concept design when we really haven't talked about how we're going to get there. So that's, that's just some of my thoughts on, on it.
Mr. DiTulio?
Thank you. I would, at this time, since the memo's been mentioned a few times, I'd ask the city clerk, please read the memo to the public so that everybody hears the same thing, please.
Are you going to read that entire memo?
No.
Okay, thank you.
I've been asked by Councilmember DiTulio to read a section of the memo that he sent to council and have it read into the record. This memo is to the City Council, Wheat Ridge Community, City Manager, and City Attorney. It is from Councilmember Jerry DiTulio from District 1, dated February 10, 2014, regarding the City Charter, Section 5.20, Street Width Designation in 38th Avenue. Excuse me. Section 5.20 of the City Charter, Street Width Designation, which is attached to the memo, was proposed and approved by the voters in 1995 after a long battle concerning 38th Avenue west of Cody to Kipling Street. The amendment applies to the widening or narrowing flow line of a street in Wheat Ridge. The amendment outlines a public and open process for a legal protest and/or a petition vote of the people when a controversial or expensive flow line change is proposed for a street in the city of Wheat Ridge. The real elephant in the room is a majority of City Council and staff spending more and more taxpayer money on a final, in quotes, two-lane road di- design that may never be implemented if adjacent property owners along 38th Avenue legally protest the narrowing of 38th Avenue and/or petition the flow line changes of 38th Avenue to a vote of the people. It is my opinion that staff in Wheat Ridge 2020 have been remiss in educating the City Council and the public about the charter amendment and its potential consequences to the 38th Avenue project. Councilmember Urban and I have proposed simple compromises such as maintaining neighborhood bike lanes on 38th Avenue and removing the back-end parking, now, not later, to help build a consensus in the community for broader support of the changes to 38th Avenue. At a recent study session, an alternative design, including bike lanes with five-foot amenity zones, was presented to City Council. This unimaginative plan was stark and barren with no street trees, even though street trees were vigorously growing in a five-foot tree lawn east of Harland Street. A few simple design adjustments could have been made to allow for neighborhood bike lanes and street trees in the amenity zones. Unfortunately, the current proposed plan eliminates neighborhood bike lanes for more sidewalks, tables and chairs next to 38th Avenue, even though the neighborhood bike lanes have been used as a selling point, as multimodal, for the road diet. It is the pin, opinion of, and then it quotes, it is the opinion of many residents and Wheat Ridge businesses, business owners in Wheat Ridge, that spending $5.57 million on 38th Avenue from Newland to Uppam Street, seven blocks, does not make fiscal sense, since the buried drainage and utility lines will need to be moved again. A permanent and expensive narrowing of 38th Avenue via curb, gutter, and sidewalk flow line does not demonstrate vision or sound planning on 38th Avenue. For example, bike lanes, multimodal, and other future amenities will not be feasible once 38th Avenue is narrowed. I strongly recommend that this, that spending another $41,000 on the two-lane road diet design be postponed until the charter amendment for street width can be fully vetted by City Council. The proposed design for 38th Avenue is too limiting for the future. Residents, business owners, and City Council should look at multiple designs for 38th Avenue together with the broader Wheat Ridge community. We need to find a solution where everyone gives and takes. The city needs to put the best plan forward for a win-win. And it is followed by Section 5.2 of the Charter, which is a two-page version of the Street Width Designation Amendment.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I'm going to speak in favor of the resolution. I went back because 38th Avenue has been a controversial part of our community here for the last several years. In 2001, I saw the first approval for the 38th Avenue Corridor Plan. That's about 13 years ago that we've been talking about this plan. I went back to the City Council meeting in October of 2011, where we passed Resolution 38 of 2011 to move forward with the 38th Avenue Corridor Plan. That plan is some 80 or 90 pages. That plan was fully vetted through the city. It was vetted through the public, in, public process. It was noticed in the paper. It had all of the street width designations in it, to which Mr. DiTulio's memo refers to that we have not vetted that plan. The plan has been vetted. That plan was discussed. And that plan was approved by the City Council. What we're doing tonight in approving this resolution to spend some money for further design work is to move forward with that plan. That plan's been approved by the city. And I think the, the money that we're going to spend on the design for these improvements, on what we hope to be a main city, a main street in our city, is to give us, is to give us the design work that will enable us to go forward, to raise the funds that we need to do to do the work, and to see this come to a reality. We're not living 60 years ago. We're living today. And our vision of today should look forward into the future. It shouldn't look back to the back. Thank you.
I will proudly vote for this plan. I agree that this has been vetted many, many, many times. This council and previous councils have all voted in favor of this plan. And although we all recognize that there are some people who are against this plan, in my opinion, the vast majority of people of Wheat Ridge want to see Wheat Ridge with a destination. We all know we're a drive-through city. There's, because, that's because there's no place to stop. There's no reason to stop. We're trying to create a reason to stop. We're trying to create a personality for the city of Wheat Ridge that would want people to come here, stop here, shop here, buy here, and live here. This is, this is just a step along that line. It's, it's another step in many that have already been taken. And, you know, there, we have experienced recently many attempts to delay and stop and hinder the progress on this plan. This, this, this is hindrance by a few people on a plan that is generally approved by the city, the citizens of Wheat Ridge. So I will vote for it.
Any more discussion?
Madam Mayor. One question I have to staff is regarding the capital investment program budget, moving these dollars out of that budget. What is not going to take place because of the removal of that money from that program?
Well, if you remember from the budget discussions, there, there currently is no money, available money in the capital budget unless additional revenues can be found or additional revenues come in in the next year or so. Revenues will have to be identified through revenue increases or through bonding or loans, or, or hopefully through increased revenues from other developments in the community.
And then why, why wouldn't you look to take the increase in sales tax revenue from this corridor to pay for its design work?
For the design work? It could, it essentially is. I mean, if you're talking about the $41,000 for the design contract, we have seen an increase of, on revenues along 38th, probably enough to cover, definitely cover the contract for this. That's what we're asking. There's obviously not enough increase in revenues to cover the $5,000 to $7,000 in construction. You know, the city's not going to see that from any, any developments along the city in the, in the near future. You know, this is an attempt to increase revenues through the city. Sometimes you have to spend some money to, to see those revenue increases.
And I think part of the, the sales pitch in the 38th Avenue improvements that have been made are regarding those sales tax increases. My concern is that in looking at the businesses on 38th, the largest drivers of sales tax revenue aren't included in these areas on 38th. It's, if you look at 38th, at King Supers is the predominant by a wide margin driver of sales tax revenue in that corridor. And the remainder of 38th does not even come close to the, the revenue that's generated by King Supers. And, and it's been pitched to us that that's the reason why we should move forward with this, because sales tax revenue's gone up. But to me, it doesn't ring true that there's that much increase in the areas where the road diet has directly impacted the corridor.
I disagree with that. We, we've provided two, two reports to City Council since the trial period implementation of the road diet. And it's been broken down by, in numerous sections. Yes, King Supers is definitely a driver. King Supers was actually decreasing, though, in revenues until they recently finished the remodel. There's been several new businesses in the Main Street area that we're talking about tonight that have really increased the revenues, relatively speaking. And they're probably mostly come, come from the new businesses that have come in. Colorado Plus, Right Coast Pizza, and a few others. So the, the increases are equally distributed across the corridor, and then those are detailed in the reports provided at City Council.
I'll be voting against this resolution tonight specifically because the city does not have the resources to move forward on this project. And I, I'm not sold on the dedication of these resources for this particular use when we could use these same resources to actually help impact directly businesses' economic growth. And the design of a roadway does not directly impact a business's economic growth. So that, the correlation hasn't been made to me to, to vote in favor of this, and therefore, I'll be voting against this resolution this evening.
Any further discussion? No. Yes, Ms. Langworthy?
I'll be voting for this, but mostly because what I, what I've heard is, is that there, you know, it wasn't ever a town center, and, and it never really would inherently be that way. But I would disagree. I would disagree because of the parents I talked to at my daughter's school. I would disagree with the parents of, of the numerous classes that we attend. And these are, these are parents that are looking for a place to consider a town center. They're looking for a place to gather. And they're looking for a place that they can feel safe walking their children up and down the streets and not have to worry about cars doing 55, 60 next to them. You know, in the, in the, DiTulio's letter talks about the bike zone. But to me, I don't, I've yet to talk to anyone who said they would be, feel safe or comfortable riding a bike on 38th Avenue if, if the cars were going. And, and 35 is a posted speed limit, but I still find people sometimes doing more than that. And it's, it does cause a problem. But it's only because they're speeding, not because, to me, it's inherently a problem with the street. I have increased my driving on 38th Avenue. I'm visiting more businesses on that end of town. I live on the west end of town. So for me, 38th Avenue is, it becomes a destination because it is outside of my normal travel. And I really do like what I've seen with Wheat Ridge on 38th Avenue. And I'm really looking forward to seeing a final plan of, of what could of what could be this generation's Main Street and invite everybody into it.
Okay. Mr. Pond?
Thank you. Well, first of all, I want to thank everyone who got up and spoke, both for and against the issue. I know, I always appreciate when people are coming forward and sharing that. I will vote for this this evening. And I just wanted to hit a couple of items that I heard that I think are worth repeating. Ms. Davis brings up, I think, two good points. And I don't want to, in voting for this, I don't want to dismiss the fact that I think it really is important for us to maintain our momentum moving forward on this and looking at funding, funding options, and how we do that. I think that is obviously something that should be happening as we move forward with this design. I also agree that we certainly shouldn't forget the other aspects of the roadway, east and west of the area that we're talking about. And that's not to say that staff is or has been forgetting that, but that I agree with that notion that as we start to increase our focus on the section that we are talking about, that we don't forget to include some of the other aspects. I certainly have been a participant in some of the things related to backend parking and other things. And I hope as we move forward, we'll, you know, continue to talk about looking at where we can make improvements to the things that we've implemented and find the right way to move forward. But finally, I don't think I can say it any better than Mr. Starker said it, which is our vision of today should look forward into the future.
Are we, Mr. DiTullio?
Thank you. I'm not even close to sixty, so I don't know what happened sixty years ago. I'm also trying to look forward. And so my memo basically talked about the city charter amendment, which has not been addressed by any council. So Mr. Dahl, Mr. Pat, and Mr. Goff, has this charter amendment been vetted through the public process to where business owners and people on Thirty-Eighth Avenue can actually either legally protest or file a petition? That hasn't happened yet. Am I correct on that?
Okay.
Well, pardon me. The charter provision requires a public hearing preceded by a public notice that's also mailed to property owners within three hundred feet of the boundary of the street, which is proposed to be reconfigured. And so, to my knowledge, that hasn't happened. The charter requires that that hearing, and as has been pointed out, there have been a number of hearings because it's kind of a long process. Charter requires that that hearing take place sometime within the one year prior to actually pouring concrete. So that's the window under the charter. Typically, I think you'd probably not have that particular charter-driven hearing until you had a design with an actual, you know, width and figure so that then you could have a hearing on that specific flow line change, which is how the charter speaks of it. It's flow line to flow line. And if you move the curb and gutter around a little bit based on the design, then you've moved that flow line. Until you know where that flow line is, you sort of can't have that hearing. And to my knowledge, that hasn't, that particular hearing hasn't been had.
So, counsel, the point of my memo is we can approve this plan and go forward. But at some point, maybe not six months from now, maybe a year from now, whenever you, counsel decides to pour concrete, there's probably going to be a legal protest. And we're going to have to go through that process. And then there'll be the petition process. This is what I've been trying to say from day one, is get rid of certain things now rather than later, so we can build more of a consensus in the community to move this forward. That's all I've been trying to make the point, is that we're moving forward. I agree. Like I said, I like progress, too. I support a lot of the changes on Thirty-Eighth Avenue when it comes to Livwell and 2020, some other programs and events. But at some point, this is going to run into a brick wall, either money-wise or legal protest-wise or petition-wise. So all I suggest is postpone this for a meeting or two and talk about it at the retreat when it comes up here in about a month. So, and I hope that if this passes tonight, somebody would make an amendment, just to direct staff to go ahead and get rid of the backend parking now, because it's probably going to be at least a year before this plan even gets on the table again. Mr. Goff says it's going to be six months before the design. And then in the next six months, we can get rid of the backend parking now, just direct staff to go ahead and do, return it back to the parallel parking. So, and then that's just one less fight we have to have in the future. Thank you.
Mr. Pond?
I just wanted to honor my commitment earlier to say that when we brought this back up, that I would be willing to discuss the backend parking again. And I am. However, I am only willing to go as far as reissuing the motion that we stated in that study session, which is for staff to investigate the options for moving backend parking, not actually directing them to do it. So I just want to be clear on that. I would be happy to bring that up either as amendment to this motion or as a motion following this. But again, I would do it in the same language that we put it forward in the study session. And that's kind of where I was getting at before.
Right. Yep. We've decided that. Of course. We allow that, don't we? If you're moving, then I need a second and a vote. And a vote, please. Paul the council.
Motion carries seven to one, Mr. Starker voting no.
Mr. Starks?
Mr. Fitzgerald, you called us a hindrance. I can't believe that. I really can't believe that. But my family's had that business there sixty years. And I've got pictures from sixty years ago where Thirty-Eighth was one lane dirt. One lane dirt. Now, you said in District Three, so what happens on Thirty-Eighth that does not affect you one bit? We have businesses down there, and it's affecting our businesses. Mr. Starker, you know, you know as well as I do, you have plans that come through the system. But you know darn well, if they're not working, you better get rid of them. And I can guarantee you, Mr. Starker, it's not working. Now, Tracy, you're saying cars are whipping by fifty, sixty miles an hour? That has never happened. Don't give me that. I don't know where you have ever come up with that. In fact, I can guarantee you now, traffic is going fast when they can, when it's not backed up on Thirty-Eighth or anything. But they're blasting out of there just to get out of there. And I can guarantee you, on Quay Street, if there's four cars waiting to get on Thirty-Eighth, which they can't turn left, can't turn right, I've almost got hit crossing my parking lot because they come whipping across my parking lot to get out of the traffic jam. But, Mr. Fitzgerald, don't you ever call me or anybody else a hindrance, because we have every right to speak up, every right to speak up, because it's affecting our business. It's not affecting your business. It's affecting ours. So I just want you to know. But anybody want to come down and see that picture from sixty years ago where Thirty-Eighth was one lane dirt? Come by and see it. But you won't, you aren't going to do it because you haven't come by yet. I've asked you before to come by, view what's going on down there. You won't do it. You won't do it. So thank you.
Okay. If there's no further discussion or commentary, let's restate the motion. Mr. Fitzgerald, could you do that for us, please?
The title is?
The recommended motion.
Okay, yeah. Okay. I move to approve Resolution Eleven, 2014, a resolution amending the fiscal year 2014 capital investment program budget to reflect the approval of a supplemental budget appropriation in the amount of forty-one thousand eight hundred and seventy dollars to fund the Thirty-Eighth Avenue Streetscape Concept Design Contract Extension to El, somebody say this for me, El Telkay, Denver, Colorado, for a not-to-exceed amount of forty-one thousand eight hundred and seventy dollars.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Starker has seconded. Please pull the council.
Motion carries five to three with council members Davis, Urban, and DiTullio voting no.
Madam Mayor, was Mr. Pond going to make a motion?
I can do it under elected officials. I want to find it in the study minutes. Thank you.
Okay. Item number three, Mr. DiTullio.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to introduce item number three, which is a motion to set and adopt operating fees for retail marijuana businesses in the city of Wheat Ridge, and that such fees become effective as of February tenth, 2014. On October fourteenth, 2013, council adopted ordinance fifteen forty-three concerning the licensing of retail marijuana establishments. Under those provisions, the city authorized to set and adopt operating fees for ongoing inspection, administration, and enforcement of those businesses licensed by the state to operate within Wheat Ridge. The city has not set operating fees concerning these types of licensed entities. Because of these types of businesses, we're permitted to begin operation within the city as of January first, 2014, council should consider adopting fees that will cover the city's cost of inspection, administration, and enforcement. A proposed fee schedule for council's considerations attached. Madam Mayor, is a motion in order?
A motion is in order?
Thank you. And I'll have one comment after this, too. I move to set and adopt operating fees for retail marijuana businesses as provided in the fee schedule for the city of Wheat Ridge that is attached, and heretofore that such fees become effective as of February tenth, 2014.
Is there a second, please?
Second.
Mr. Starker has seconded? And you wish to speak to the motion?
Yes. At the study session, we also made a consensus to have licensing fees. But in speaking with the city manager and actually the city attorney, the state is handling those licensing fees. And I think there's a share-back program with, from the state to the city. So we're not implementing our own licensing fees because those are actually going to be through the state of Colorado. And we're actually passing the operating fees, which I'll just go ahead and read to the public. Retail marijuana store, the annual operating fee will be fifteen hundred dollars. Retail marijuana cultivation facility, annual operating fee of six hundred dollars. Retail marijuana products manufacturer, six hundred dollars. And retail marijuana products manufacturer, six hundred dollars. I guess those are the same thing, Mr.? The same, they had the same?
Yeah, they're the same.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, if I can add to that, as you'll see, they go up by a hundred dollars if it's more than ninety days past due. And Councilmember DiTullio mentioned licensing fees. And yes, that came up in the study session. I wanted to make sure council knew. I went to the, back to the books and looked at the constitutional amendment, which you've got to look at because it controls, and discovered that while it contemplates local licensing fees, that's only if the state didn't get into the licensing business, remembering that the constitutional amendment was passed before the state actually made the decision whether or not it was going to get into the licensing business. Since the state did, the constitutional amendment provides that if the state does that, then locals may not. But the state then is required to share back half of, I think, their twenty-five hundred dollar licensing fee with the city. The city will impose, and I think the memo in the packet says it, our business license twenty-dollar fee, which we really use more to make certain they have a sales tax license and can track sales taxes. But we won't be able to impose that, whatever it was, several hundred dollar licensing fee. But we'll have the operating fee. And I wanted to tell you that I discovered that and wanted to tell you about it.
We have retail marijuana products manufacturer listed here twice. It seems to me that when we discussed this in study session, it was retail marijuana testing laboratory?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Starker. I just conferred with Community Valma Director. It should be testing. I'm not sure how that got changed. So we will fix that for the final fee schedule. It's a testing facility is the fourth license.
And Ms. Davis?
Thank you. So I have just a quick question because we talked about the fees regarding some of the licensing, like the background checks. So that will all be done by the state and not by us, correct?
Correct. And the fee to the state for a medical marijuana establishment converting to a retail is five hundred dollar license fee. The city will get half of that. If it's a brand-new business going directly to retail, it's twenty-five hundred. The city will get half of that.
Any further discussion?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Urban?
My question is regarding the background information. It indicates that two retail marijuana establishments have begun operating within the city. How do they do that prior to us issuing the licensing fees and costs?
The ordinance that the council passed, pardon me, allowed those businesses to commence operations as of January one. And as businesses, we, you know, we had to hew to that ordinance and allow them to operate. The fact that we had the power to impose operating fees, which is kind of an ongoing cost, when you think about it. Ideally, you want to have those fees in ahead of time, but they weren't. And we'll commence imposing them, what, February tenth? So, but they were, I think it's, the question's a good one. Were they legally allowed to operate? And yes, per the city's ordinance, they were allowed to operate as of January one.
And they're aware that fees are coming, and they're prepared to pay the fees?
Okay.
Okay. Are we ready to vote on this? Please pull the council.
Motion carries eight zero.
Item number four, Ms. Davis?
Thank you. As you may all recall, we ran out of time last week to talk about the bicycle improvements on Pier Street. So instead of adjourning one meeting and starting a study session for one item, I just put this as a topic on this meeting. So bear with me here. So the title and the discussion point here is the staff needs direction to engage in a public process and commence preliminary design for bicycle improvements to Pier Street between Twenty-sixth and Forty-eighth Avenue. At issue is that we're, the city lacks adequate north-south bicycle transportation corridors across the length of the city. And higher traffic corridors such as Wadsworth Boulevard and Kibbling requires significant longer-term capital investments. However, Pier Street has been identified as a significant north-south segment with more feasible opportunities to explore the improvements. And I know during the budgeting process, we had identified some money that we could put towards this. So staff, I'm sure, will go over a lot of the improvements discussed.
Thank you, Councilmember Davis. While I try and get the camera activated here, I have a very brief presentation.
I'm going to stall a little bit more, Todd.
We could read the rest of the memo.
Yeah. Do y'all want me to read the rest of the memo of the question?
Manager?
You look like Moses.
I want to, wait, wait.
Oh, Mr. DiTullio wishes to chat while we're doing this.
Well, I just wanted to thank the mayor pro temp for actually putting this on the agenda. I think it makes way more sense to have some of these items on the agenda, with the agenda on regular meeting nights. We just get them done one time versus twice. So I appreciate that effort, one hundred and ten percent. So thank you.
Okay. I am going to stall a little bit just to talk. You keep projecting, and I'll, so I'll go into a little bit more detail with that in mind, so to maybe save you some time on that. So as council, we did identify that Pier Street from Twenty-sixth Avenue to Forty-eighth Avenue in the master plan is a segment for the future bicycle improvements. More specifically, the master plan identifies the segment for future on-road facilities such as bike lanes, shoulders, or shared lanes. So this is the area that we're going to be looking at. We did earmark sixty-three thousand in our 2014 capital investment program budget to invest in these accommodations for this segment. You ready to go yet? Keep stalling? I don't know if I can. I know. Trust me. I could be like, okay, now here's a picture. Oh, it's on. Oh. Oh, it's on. Oh, you're in luck. All right, good. It's also worse when people are waiting for you. Just want to make you squirm a little bit.
All right, thank you. I'll make the presentation a little bit shorter, not that it was going to be long, anyway. Thank you again. We're here tonight to talk about bicycle improvements for Pier Street, basically the whole length, width of the city, from Forty-Eighth Street all the way down to Twenty-sixth Avenue, or Forty-Eighth Avenue to Twenty-sixth Avenue. This isn't anything new. This has kind of been in the works for several years, going back to when the city was developing the comprehensive plan and through Envision Wheat Ridge, Live Well Wheat Ridge, several stakeholders in the community. Long public process led to completion of the comprehensive plan in two thousand and nine, and the Bike and Ped Master Plan in two thousand and eleven. And in that master plan included provisions for bicycle improvements for Pier Street, as well as other segments. Again, looking at the master plan here, if you're looking at the entire city here, one of the things that stands out with bicycle and pedestrian needs, particularly for bicycles, and cars for that matter, are good north-south routes through across the city from north to south. For bicycles, Pier Street stands out as a good candidate to do some improvements, mostly because our other north-south corridors that do go through, like Wadsworth, Kipling, Sheridan, are not bike-friendly, and to make them bike-friendly is going to take a considerable more amount of effort and money and so forth. So Pier Street was identified as a higher priority when the bike plan was put together. If you look at the, I don't have a good pointer here, but if you can look at Pier Street, kind of follow where that goes, starting up at Forty-eighth Avenue, the intent would be to connect it with the Clear Creek Trail just to the north, take, guide people to the east and down the hill to the trail there from Otis Street, and connect Forty-eighth Avenue all the way down to Twenty-sixth, and that would provide a link all the way across the city from the Clear Creek Trail all the way down into Lakewood. And what I've got here is just a map of the Jefferson County Bicycle, County Bicycle Plan. On their plan, they show Pier Street on there as well. So from a regional standpoint, it's considered a higher priority for improvements as well. In your packet here, I threw in several photographs. And one of the challenges with putting bicycle facilities on Pier Street is just the diversity of the street and the way it changes all the way from north to south. The width changes considerably along the width. At some places, it's only about thirty feet wide. Other places, it's about forty-four feet wide. Some places, there's curb and gutter. Some places, there aren't. There's just gravel, shoulders, or maybe nothing at all. So one of the challenges in deciding what to do with Pier Street is how to deal with the existing physical state of the street, and then with parking. Parking is allowed along the entire length of the street. In some places, there seems to be more parking than others. Some places, very little, if any, parking at all. So when we go ahead and look at trying to do bicycle improvements to Pier Street, there's a variety of different things we can do, and I'll get into those, kind of skip over the streets here. But you can kind of see from the pictures here, kind of gives you a little idea how it changes here. Even on one segment, there's curb and gutter on one side and not on the other. So, and again, the width changes quite a bit. Some places, you see some parking, and others, none at all. And particularly when we get north of Forty-Fourth Avenue, the traffic really drops right there compared to the rest of Pier Street further south. It actually drops considerably, and it's more of a local neighborhood street there. So what we do for bicycle improvements on the very north end up there, you know, could be different than further south. Maybe the intensity of the auto traffic combined with the bicycle use can warrant something else. But when we start talking about options and things we can do, in the packet, we suggest three alternatives here. One is dedicated bike lanes, and this is usually the preferred option. It gives a dedicated space for bicycles, separates them from the traffic, which is a good thing. The other thing it does is it can, you know, slow the traffic down a little bit, too, because the striping on the side does sometimes tend to slow the traffic down a little bit. So as far as safety for bicyclists, and even for the autos as well, this is usually a preferred option, particularly if it's a street with higher traffic volumes and higher speeds. A shared parking bicycle lane, this is seen quite a bit. In fact, I think Pier Street, as you go south into Lakewood, Pierce down there, at least on one side of the street, is striped this way, meaning you have the stripe on the side there where bicycles can ride, but people can also park there, too. So this can work if there's not a lot of parking. If there tends to be a lot of parking all times of the day, it doesn't work quite as well. But, and I believe this is also what you see on Thirty-second Avenue going west of Kipling. There's a striped area off to the side there, and it's signed as a bike route, not necessarily as a dedicated bike lane, but at least in the times I've driven that stretch of Thirty-second, I've seen very little, if any, parking. So it does seem to act just like a bike lane. The other option is sharrows, and kind of as you see in the photo here where there's a lot of parking, and maybe you don't have much space to put in those dedicated bike lanes, but you don't necessarily want to take away the parking. This is sometimes a good option, because it allows the bikes and the cars to share the same space. It's good from the standpoint that it's very easy to put in. It's cheaper. The negative is you've got the cars and the bikes mixing together, which isn't necessarily as safe either, but it's safer than, you know, nothing. So kind of as I conclude here, where staff would like to go to next is to go engage in a public process. Parking is a big issue. We'd like to, you know, pursue the idea of putting in bike lanes if we can, but we know there's issues with parking, so we'd like to go out to the public, get some feedback, see how precious the parking is. It may be, you know, real, needed badly in some places more than others. There's different options. I wouldn't call this an all-or-nothing thing. We like to have consistency in what we do. But there is some flexibility. As I said, north of Forty-Fourth Avenue, sharrows might be totally appropriate, because the traffic is so much less. But going south from there, where the speeds are a little faster and the traffic heavier, we would like to see what else we can do. So through the public process, we get a feel from the adjacent property owners, their feelings on the parking. We engage, you know, the rest of the community, too, the people that drive, you know, Pier Street, bike it, other stakeholders in the community that have an interest, and just see what people think. And again, like I said, there's flexibility here. Maybe we, you know, one option maybe is you allow parking on one side of the street, but not the other. I mean, we just want to explore those things through the public process. So tonight, we're just asking you to allow us to go ahead and start that, and we'd like to come back with you, come back to you maybe in a couple of months here and let you know what we found out and move from there.
Okay. Is there some discussion or questions of staff at this time? Let's move on to the question. Did you, go ahead and?
So I think based off of some earlier discussions and what you were saying, I would like to recommend that council ask staff to engage in further public process to address the parking and there are other issues with regards to the street and understand and talk with the folks as far as the differences in the traffic counts. And I would also ask that you work with our friends at Wheat Ridge Recycler for suggestions and?
Second.
Mr. Starker?
We may have some people in the public who would like to opine on this also.
Oh, good point. Thank you. Do we have someone that wishes to speak to this?
My name is Rachel Hultin. That's H-U-L-T-I-N, and I live at forty-six ninety Balsam Street. And I feel like, my son thinks I'm famous, because he sees me on Channel Eight a lot. I'm so glad we have so many great things up here to talk about. And so I had a really fun day. I just spent the day at Bicycle Colorado Summit and had several people that are in the room here that were there today. And one of the themes that came up again and again throughout the day, starting with the governor and trickling down to local municipalities, was the importance of considering the range of styles and capacity of cycling, that we have both, what we refer to in our Bike Ped Master Plan on page four as a type A cyclist, which doesn't sound very flattering to me. But that's the very capable, confident cyclist that would feel good biking just about any facility, whether it's a designated bikeway or not. And then from there, we trickle down to type C, which is a less confident child or somebody who maybe has physical impairment that keeps them from being able to navigate their environment confidently. When I look at Pier Street, Pier Street is singularly the only non-arterial road that goes from our south border with Lakewood all the way to Clear Creek. So the only exceptions to that are Kipling and Wadsworth and Sheridan. So I think we need to recognize that Pier Street isn't just our first really pointed investment in bicycle facilities, but really a singular opportunity to create that north-south connectivity, and not one to be taken lightly. And I need to, when I look at it, I want to see it to be a facility that cyclists of all capacities feel comfortable navigating, because if we don't accommodate them there, there is no other opportunity to get them north-south in Wheat Ridge. So I recognize that this is our first line item allocation towards bike ped infrastructure investment. And I really encourage council to really recognize that this is an opportunity for all the cyclists in our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel, my name is Ann Brinkman, seventy-four twenty West Thirty-Fourth Avenue, District One. I am on planning commission, and I'm not speaking as a planning commissioner. However, I did refer to the comprehensive plan, and I'm going to speak to you about that real quick. I went through in size ten font, found three pages of references to Pier Street in our comprehensive plan, which was adopted by the city council after first and second readings, public stakeholder, public hearings, public input, all the stakeholder input. It was adopted in two thousand and nine, and throughout, it talks about how important Pier Street is to Thirty-eighth Avenue, to all the businesses around, et cetera, et cetera. And I'm happy to leave these for you if you'd like to read, but I'm going to read a couple to you. So Pier Street is covered in Chapters Three, Quarters and Gateways, Chapter Seven, Transportation, and Chapters Nine, Sustainable Future. So in Chapter Three, page twenty-five, identifies Wadsworth Boulevard as a primary commercial corridor. Under future character and uses, the plan states for Wadsworth, the city will also improve bicycle and pedestrian connections along routes parallel to Wadsworth. And as you just heard Rachel mentioning, that's the only one that goes all the way straight through. On page thirty, the city will prioritize pedestrian accessibility within these condensed commercial nodes that are generally along neighborhood commercial quarters and neighborhood collector roadways. Pierce. Rachel mentioned the Wheat Ridge Bike and Pedestrian Route Master Plan. Number one on the list was on-street bicycle facility east of Wadsworth Boulevard on Pier Street. This project includes bicycle enhancements to Pier Street to create a continuous north-south bicycle connection through the city. Then it goes on, then it goes on, then it goes on. Lastly, let me just read to you. Under sustainable future, goal number four was to maintain a healthy and active community. Two strategies were listed on Pages one hundred and one oh one. Develop pedestrian and bicycle connections between neighborhoods and existing and proposed community activity centers and employment opportunities, and investigate and respond to the activity and lifestyle needs of an aging population and young families. I think Pier Street, in the definition of your type A cyclist, which is your very experienced cyclist and your type C, I think Pier Street will achieve that. I'm new, I'm relatively new to bicycling, so I was a C, and I'm moving up to B and A. But I rely on Pier Street to get me to the Clear Creek and to get me to Golden and to get me downtown. And so I really hope you consider making these changes. Thanks.
Thank you.
Good evening. Adam Wiley, ninety-eight sixty, sorry, W-Y-L-I-E, ninety-eight sixty-five West Thirty-Fifth Avenue. I also rely on Pier Street on a daily basis. As a, personally, when I cycle on my own, I don't worry too much about infrastructure. However, I do have two young children, and we rely heavily on infrastructure in those cases, because I simply, it's simply not safe for them to travel on many other types of streets that aren't striped or somehow better identified for those uses. We recently located to Wheat Ridge, because of its location, because of its family-friendly community. The ridge area of Thirty-eighth is a big part of that and was a big part of that draw, and that's not off-topic, because I think Pierce feeds into that. It has potential to bring people there safely. It has the potential to reduce traffic, vehicular traffic. To Thirty-eighth as well, to utilize some of those amenities that we enjoy a lot, such as some of the businesses, restaurants, the art gallery, those types of things that we frequent. And I do want to reiterate as well, if you look at a map of all the bike routes, there's sort of a gap in Wheat Ridge, especially north to south. East to west, we're not too bad. Obviously, the trail is fantastic, but we definitely have a gap north to south. Being able to connect communities, Arvada, obviously, and Lakewood, which is a theme we don't just talk about ourselves, but we hear from those communities as well. And not only from our cycling standpoint, walking, running, et cetera, are all, can be enhanced via these types of improvements. So again, obviously, there are some challenges. I think we all appreciate those. I think there are some areas where we can use proper striping and to create safe infrastructure for entire families. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hello. Gil McCormick. I work at Wheat Ridge Recycler. Okay, so I'm super excited about this, because I've been on this project for over a decade with the city. And Pierce was always the low-hanging fruit, because we really needed something north-south to connect Arvada to Lakewood. And both Arvada and Lakewood are way ahead of us when it comes to bicycle infrastructures. So this is just huge for Wheat Ridge, as far as bringing people in who can come, not by car, but by bike or maybe other modes of transportation. And being on Thirty-eighth, I hope they will come visit Thirty-eighth and hang out for a while and buy a beer and a bike. So excited about that. I thank you that you would include Wheat Ridge, Wheat Recycler, in this process. We've got a lot of good ideas. I do all the advocacy work at a state level, county level, city level, dirt level. Pretty involved in that world. So love to help with design. When we do this, being in an extreme type A here, I do know that most people do not want to ride their bike on a street because of the dangers, right? We all get that, texting, et cetera, marijuana, we just talked about it. So we need to create facilities that will reach out to people with that concern. They're interested, but we really need to be cognizant of people who just want to ride their bike from point A to point B safely. The new high-level way of building bicycle infrastructure right now is called a protected bike lane, where you're completely protected from cars. That would be incredible, and I hope we get there in the city. A bike lane would be almost at the minimum level now, as far as what is getting people to go by bike. So when you build these things, we have to be thinking about the masses using this facility in a way that is consistent and often. Okay? Thanks for your time, and thanks for doing this.
Thank you, Mr. McCormick.
Hi, I'm Ron Kieffel. What's my address? Thirty-eight ninety-three Field Drive, and also with Wheat Ridge Recycler. And I just want to thank the council for addressing this issue. As Gil mentioned, cycling is, you know, we are a little bit behind in Wheat Ridge, but to be able to- to be able to start this discussion and looking at this multimodal transportation, you know, this does feed into all the vision that's going on to 38th Avenue. And so I want to support you and thank you for that continued growth and ideas along there. I know that corridors do change. We just bought a new house and sold our current house, and all the discussion, all the work that's been going on on 38th and the ridge at 38th and these improvements, the young family that purchased our property, they really bought into that vision and they really were excited about the house, not because it just looked great, you know, but also because of all the work that's going on in the city and in that future and in looking forward into that. So, and embracing this multimodal transportation. So just want to say thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Keefel.
I'm just helping Mike introduce himself here. Mike, can you introduce yourself and your address?
Hi.
Hi, Mike.
Audience.
Can we get your full name? Rachel, do you want to help fill name and address?
I'm sorry, ma'am, I don't, don't hear well.
Rachel, certainly. Or you could do it, Rachel.
Oh. My name, I'm Michael Wanteen. This is my companion Louis. We live on 3800 Block Quail, 3815 Quail, down at the bottom of the hill.
Thank you.
That way west. And Rachel asked us to come up and speak. I don't know what has been said. I can't hear people.
Okay.
Read lips and catch bits and pieces, but I've been following this bicycle thing. This is home. We recently moved back to home, the Front Range, and Wheat Ridge now where I've been commuting by bicycle essentially all my life. I no longer drive a vehicle and have hearing issues and vision issues. And what I wanted to address with these plans and the consideration you're giving to the bicycle routes, would like to lend my support to whatever consideration you may be able to have or input that you may have on some of these larger deliberations with the linking together of the routes and the transportations, particularly for people like myself, and there's a lot of us, I must add, that the people that show up at council meetings are typically not us guys who are walking the pedestrian routes and on bicycles. And the safety issues are very important for even people who are what I think Rachel would call high-confidence riders, where I used to be a high-confidence rider. I used to race, I used to compete, I used to do many things, and I didn't used to have a companion onboard either. But that said, with all of these plans that are going in and the considerations between the shared paths and the et cetera, et cetera, all I would like to ask and encourage, particularly those of you who have these input or are making decisions with where monies go for these projects, I would encourage each and every one of you to walk the path, at least, if not borrow, get, use one of your own bicycles and ride it so you know what kind of things we're watching out for. And I would not care to see any more of the shared parking type of paths, only because even with high-confidence riders, I'm still trying to see what's coming over here to swing out, get around a parked car, and swing back in. And I personally am no longer able to have that field of vision, but I know even when I was a high-confidence rider and going along on those types of routes, that's a tough, tough thing on any, any day, even in good weather. Throw a little ice or snow on it, it's real tricky, real fast. The rest of them, great, and I'm happy to see that there is progress being made, putting these pieces together into a more cohesive kind of a trail, and I believe that it will serve everybody's best interest, local businesses, as well as us who are the baby boomers coming at y'all in big wave, who are going to be using these things more often.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, would you like me to repeat the motion?
Yes, please.
George, did you have more discussion?
I can discuss after.
You can discuss after the motion.
All right. I move to direct staff to engage in public process and commence preliminary design for the bicycle improvements to Pier Street between 26th Avenue and 48th Avenue.
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Tullio. Mr. Pond would like to discuss.
The only thing, I just wanted to kind of add to this, to what Ms. Davis mentioned before about bringing, bringing specific groups in, and I know I am aware and have participated, as others have, with a, with a group, very active group of residents and others convening as a Wheat Ridge Bike and Ped Advisory Team, I would ask, in addition to the request that, that Ms. Davis made earlier, that that group get involved in this, be outreach by, by city staff as we go through this process.
Any other commentary? Please pull the console.
Motion carries eight zero.
Thank you, and thank you, Scott. Oh, that's the end. No more pages. I guess that means it's the end. We have finished the official, we've gone through the various options on the agenda, and let's have city managers matters.
Great, thank you, Mayor. Just a quick, quick couple of updates on some projects. Our Kipling Trail project on Kipling from 32nd to 44th, we will be having a neighborhood meeting, well, no, February, February 12th, Wednesday night, at 5:00 PM at the Recreation Center in Wheat Ridge. If you live in that area, you may want to come out and hear about the project. There definitely will be some impacts to residents and businesses once the construction does start in the future and the undergrounding of power lines along Kipling, so you can come out and hear about the whole project. Also, as part of the commuter rail project from RTD, they're going to be closing Kipling Parkway from Ridge Road, on Ridge Road between 51st and 56th Place for eight consecutive nights starting tomorrow, from 8:00 PM to 5:00 AM. So if you're out and about after those hours, you may want to find an alternate route. I'd also like to thank our Jefferson County School Superintendent Cindy Stevenson. If you haven't heard, she has actually moved up her resignation to the end of the month. So I'd like to wish Cindy Stevenson good luck with her next assignments. Thank you.
Thank you. City Attorney's Matters?
Nothing tonight, thanks.
Treasurer? And the city clerk?
I do have one thing. It's not really a clerk matter, but I wanted to share it with you. As you, some of you know, I'm involved in the Leadership Jefferson County program this year, and last Friday was Local Government Day. The city of Wheat Ridge hosted the morning session, Lakewood the afternoon session. And the thing that I wanted to share with you is that when we were in Lakewood, we got to spend some time and had a little bit of a tour of the emergency operations center. The city participates with, in an IGA with Lakewood and West Metro Fire, and it was very interesting to see that room. It's very classy. They have kind of a U-shaped setup, and all of the different considerations like utilities, communication, transportation, hospitals, schools, animals. They got a little diagram of it. I can't remember all what they were, they passed it out. But when there's some kind of an incident, and interestingly enough, one of the class members asked, well, can you share us a recent emergency that you dealt with? And here, laying right on the table, were the maps they had been discussing. This didn't, this happened last fall, I guess you'd say, with the floods, and it had to do with Maple Grove Reservoir and the potential possibility to have to evacuate that area. And fortunately, nothing happened, but with all the rain and it was getting, the dam was filling up and was close to potential to need to maybe sort of start having some action. And he told all the different steps it would take and all the people that would be involved, and it was very interesting. So that's something that you vote to spend money on, and I just wanted to tell you that I saw it, and I was very impressed. And it's, I think, and it's a good thing for, for the, it's money well-spent for the citizens. They have, there's a multitude of monitors in there, and they have access to every traffic camera and in Lakewood and Wheat Ridge, and they can also access all of the C-DOT cameras so they, to monitor traffic. If, you know, if something happens way up north, it might affect us. If it happens way down south, it might affect us. And it was just amazing how they have just state-of-the-art monitoring and abilities to spring into action when there's, you know, fires, floods, any, any kind of potential they talked about if there was ever, you know, terrorist action or something, and I feel pretty confident there. The command center might be elsewhere, but this is the operations center where all those factors and entities can come together and, and share and make decisions. It was wonderful. So that's why I wanted to tell you about that.
Sounds like you enjoyed it. Mr. Tullio.
Well, thank you. I think it was last council that we had talked about, council talked about having more issues brought to the dais for discussion like tonight with the bike pass, and I just wanted to encourage our mayor pro tem and our city manager to do that more often because, like we've mentioned in the past, consensus votes really not binding, and so if we can get something on the dais and have a motion like we did tonight for the bike pass, staff gets their direction, it saves maybe a meeting. I really would encourage that for the future, we can get more done, be more efficient. And once we get into that rotation of getting more items on the regular agenda, our study sessions will really be study sessions where we're looking at bigger, broader issues. I hope we can continue that for the future. And I just wanted to remind everybody that this Thursday is parent-teacher conferences at Wheat Ridge High School. School is out at 12:20, and parent-teacher conferences at the high school will be from 2 until 8 o'clock at night. So if you have a high school student at Wheat Ridge High School, please feel free to join us. All the teachers will be there. Thank you.
Mr. Starker?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would just like to thank all of the people who came tonight to express their opinions on the work that we do as a council. Your opinions matter. We hear them. We may not always agree, but I appreciate your coming and, and telling us directly how you feel that we should participate in governing this city. So thank you.
Mr. Urban?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I know we're not supposed to pander to voters here, but I'd like to reach out to one specific voter tonight, and that's my wife Melinda. Today is our seventh wedding anniversary, so just want to reach out to her and tell her that I love her. I want to thank Scott Brink and Ken Johnstone for their help in a number of neighborhood-related issues that we've been working on, and they've done a great job in responding, and Patrick as well, thank you. And Carra Housing Assistance Corporation is having a homeownership education class on February 19th, and you can go to the Carra Housing and Finance Authority's website at chaffainfo.com to get more information about when that class is held. And then one thing that I did pick up on from our discussion and study session regarding the budget-based or priority-based budgeting was a case study in Douglas County, Nevada, where they had an online budget challenge where they allowed the public to distribute a fictitious $500 amount to six community result or priority areas that the county strives to provide for the community as identified through the strategic planning process. And then through that process, the participants get to choose what amount is allocated to each of the specific priority areas. And I'd like to ask staff to consider adopting a similar type of approach so that we can encourage citizens to take an online budget challenge if that's feasible or not. I wouldn't want to spend a tremendous amount of money on it, but I would like to encourage citizens to play the budget game to, to know what we have to go through on council to try to get everything to fit into what is increasingly smaller pot. So I'm not sure if that's already been considered, or if we can reach out to Douglas County in Nevada to see what approach they took in doing that.
Yeah, actually, actually, we are, we are doing that. We were going to do that at the forums, but since we're not moving forward with the forums, we'll, we're going to, we're looking at an online tool to do that. And actually, we work with Douglas County, we present with Douglas County in Nevada on PBB Process. We present it with them in Washington, DC, and we're going to present with them at the Transforming Local Government Conference here in Denver in April. So we're, we know them well. Thank you.
And then last thing is just find it and buy it in Wheat Ridge if you can. Thank you.
Oh, no, Mike is returned. Ms. Davis?
I just want to, again, thank everyone for, for coming tonight and speaking and sharing their thoughts and issues with what's going on in the city. And I am excited to look towards the future, and I'm also confident and I'm happy to see that we're providing a safe environment, that people are able to voice their concerns and opinions in an environment that they feel safe. So I just want to thank people for coming out and talking.
Mr. Pond?
Thank you. I think I already thanked people for coming in. I'll thank them again, and then I will go ahead and read a motion for staff to research back-end parking options. I do have this written out for the clerk, however, I will just say in advance, this is a slight readjustment to make this a motion, not a consensus based on language in item number four from the January 6th agenda. I move to direct staff to research the option for removing the back-end parking on 38th Avenue and replacing it with other parking options. The option should include pricing and schedules, along with any other pertinent information necessary for council to make a decision whether to direct staff to implement the changes.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Pull the console, or is there discussion? Sorry.
May I just make one little addendum to it? Is to, I know, and you kind of had something blanked in as far as other items, but I know we previously talked about talking to the business owners. That'll be affected, so just be, you know, just if we can make sure that it's clear that that's one of the things we do is talk to the affected business owners.
Do you need me to change that motion, or is that enough?
You are amending.
Yeah, or as long as we know in that clarification, what was that? And it says it's kind of a vague statement. It was the cost, and then what was the one after it was, and other?
Option should include pricing and schedules, along with any other pertinent information necessary.
The pertinent information.
Including reaching out to business owners.
Include conversations with business owners that may be affected.
I'm willing to add that. Do I need to restate it?
If the seconds are right with the change.
I'm okay with that as a second, that's fine.
Then it can be considered the amendment, or considered the motion. So you just vote on the motion.
As amended?
Yeah.
You don't have to vote? We should vote on the amendment.
No, no, because you've got the second to agree, so you have a motion that's been revised.
I've got that.
You've got it?
Mm-hmm.
All right, we have a second then. Would we please, do we need to reread it, or is everybody comfortable with it, what we're voting on? All right, please pull the console.
Motion carries seven to one with council member Wooden voting no. Motion carries seven to one with council member Wooden voting no.
Hey, um, Mr. Fitzgerald. You want some meeting?
Yes, I know. I was waiting for it. Uh, I just want to tell you, everybody, that, uh, the Wheat Ridge Business District is, uh, has many grants for businesses, uh, both new and old. Um, and I just want to let everybody know that they are currently working on a landscape grant that will allow old, uh, existing businesses, let's not say old, existing businesses, uh, to improve their landscaping, and I think that's something that's sorely needed in the city, so I'm really happy to see that. And they're still working on it, they'll, they'll announce it very soon.
Thank you, Ms. Fitzgerald, and Ms. Langworthy.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I don't have my information in front of me, I, and I'm not going to, I'm not going to mess up the NOR grant again. What I do know is that, um, and Nate updated me, the, the city of Wheat Ridge has been very blessed to receive nine-hundred thousand dollars, um, to be used towards our active adults in Wheat Ridge, um, to help find needs that they assess to be a problem, and then that money can go and toward addressing those, those issues. Um, they're having several meetings going on, and is that information on Channel Eight? That the, I guess one of them are, one of them's tomorrow? One of them's tomorrow. I thought there was one on the, maybe it was the second, but anyway, so if...
Sorry, I don't know, I don't know that.
I know, and...
I'll see if it's on the website real quick.
I believe it is, because I think Nate has put it out there. But if, if you are interested in finding out about this NOR grant and what services or what you might want to say, you can contact me. Um, my information is on the city website, and I'd be more than happy to pass on the meetings.
Uh, thank you. I too would like to thank Cindy Stevenson for her years of service to Jefferson County and wish her the best in her future endeavors. And tomorrow evening at six-thirty at Right Coast Pizza, there's going to be a showing of a movie, and I believe it was originally, or is originally going to be on PBS, and it features a Wheat Ridge farmer. And so it's very exciting to have, um, somebody in Wheat Ridge featured like this, and they're going to screen this movie tomorrow evening, six-thirty at Right Coast Pizza. It's called Chef Driven.
I think we're having a local, um, event, uh, is it Thursday at Rocco's? That's Thursday night? Okay. Um, I just want to say that, um, it's been an interesting meeting tonight, a lot of good comments from both, uh, council as well as the public. Um, also want you all to know that, uh, these three of us, I believe, are attending, myself plus three of, of your council members are taking their time to attend what's called the Smart Growth Conference in Denver. We've also got someone from staff coming. It's a pretty, um, pretty usually a pretty good conference, and we're taking advantage of it that it's being here in Denver. I don't think I have anything else, and I believe the meeting's adjourned unless somebody else has something. Nope, meeting's adjourned.